This conference will now be recorded.
I'd like to call to order the October 9th, 2023 special work session to order at 6:30 PM. Any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight? If not, would you like to make a motion that's up the agenda?
Go move, Mr. Mayor.
So move is our second, second about Councilor Norman.
Uh, Councilor Ash.
Aye.
Councilor Wagner.
Aye.
Councilor Webb.
Aye.
Councilor Norman.
Aye.
Uh, Mayor Hooper.
Aye.
Motion care.
Thank you. Moving right into discussion project priority update. I'll have, Jose gave us larger copies, so we don't have to do that easier to see and talk about, so.
So you guys just recently updated this and it had the newest updated codes. So I don't know if you guys want to go through, tell me if there's any questions or if you want, should be the same one.
Yeah.
The same, okay. Um, because not much has changed since you adopted it and just got it to yourself, so. Cameras, it's Spencer, I'm still fighting with Blue Mountain to get me the specs. I just need to, and I'm just gonna have to call Joe, the president tomorrow and be like, I don't know what's taking so long, but. So that's that one. The manhole lining with ARPA, we're staff's actually meeting tomorrow morning. We've got the vacuum testing, a map of what Public Works has identified. We're gonna take the manhole review sheets and incorporate that data and then come up with our list. The one thing, so originally OXPO said it was like so much per manhole and then they said, well, it would be this much a day charge. If you wanted just to come, if we wanted to just reserve them for like a week. Which I'm fine with, but I want to know, estimate how many manholes are we gonna get done in a day? If it makes cost effective sense and then depending on what our list results are, maybe I'd come to council for two five day stents of their people if our list warrants it, depending if it's gonna make the most bang for our buck. So staff's working that, finalizing that list tomorrow. Chris is coming in with the other data that we need. And then if there are hot, heavy or medium flow ones that he's not asking to be done, or for some reason they're not in the project for this contractor, then I'm gonna, we're gonna have explanation as to why we don't think that one warrants, you know, being part of the main project. His goal, he said, was that the majority of the ones left would be the light that they could do after they're trained. And we sick the contractor on the heavy infiltration or medium infiltration. There's gonna be some of the heavy ones though, that this application won't work for. We're going to have the contractor review the, a few of those heavy ones with the big breaks and possibly like point us in the direction of a better application for those. Some of them we know probably are just gonna need a brand new manhole. But we're trying to see if there's another application. Could we stop it, reroute sewer and pour a base if the base is cracked with like a quick setting? Concrete plus some sort of caulking or epoxy at the bay, you know, kind of pick their brain while they're here. Um, so most likely their work would happen in December, according to OXPO. So, so as to not bring you a half baked project, we're slating that we'll bring you the proposal November 6th to allocate ARPA funds to then engage with them.
Jose, do you have any idea roughly the amount of manholes and the cost?
Well, so their original thing was 2,500 a manhole.
Yeah.
But that was kind of just a ballpark because it would really depend on how many holes we have to drill. Um, so that's why they kind of turned us on to maybe we do it per day. And I think it was $5,200 for a day, which seems like even if you get two manholes or three manholes, that's still saving money over the per manhole cost. Um, but I just need, I need to see what their agreement says and what they're promising before we decide to go that way or pitch it to you guys that way. Because if it's $5,200 and they're only doing one manhole, then I'll take the per manhole price, thank you very much. And we'll just have you out here longer during doing each manhole. Um, there's 45 on the Public Works list that they are recommending be treated in this capacity. But we have to kind of whittle that down because we know even with two weeks, there's not potential for them to hit them all. So we're gonna look at all the data and then the ones that may be more difficult, have the contractor do those and pull some of the light infiltration off the list and have Public Works do those after they have training. And then it will really just be a time and materials cost for us, once they're trained in it and how to spot it and how to. And a little bit upfront, we'll have to go pressure wash the ones that they're gonna do. And that's why we want the list to be more firm, because I don't want to waste Jonathan's time pressure washing a whole bunch of manholes that they don't ever get to. I want the most problematic that this application will fix done by these people, so that we're not wasting our energy.
We're for a little emphasis on this area, or?
Yeah, there is, but Jeff didn't want it to just be one side. So we are addressing some of the infiltration heavier ones on the other side of the town too. But for sure, we're starting with the Bellagio worst that contributes to that problem, then we're kind of spread out.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, Corey Hill, the INI, the springboard, all that. So that's all kind of part of the same thing. Our application, we had a couple of tweaks that have, that we had to do. One of them was to our application for the project. We had money that's, we're, so we applied for OWEB funding, which is through Maggie and uh, Fisheries and for the kind of grading of the rock we have to do once we remove the pipe across the name or across Rock Creek. Uh, that is not secured, we are recommended, we're seventh on the, we got, we got numbered, which is good. Potentially we'll get recommended and funded for that, but CDBG doesn't want any amounts in your budget that aren't secured. So we're looking at flip flopping the 175,000 that we had in OWEB funding with SDC funding. If we get OWEB, it's funded. If we don't, the grading of the rock doesn't have to happen within the CDBG grant. It's a Fisheries requirement, so it doesn't have to happen at the exact same time we pull the pipe out. It just has to happen. So we're not too worried about that. We amended that part of our um, application for Shelby at the state. And then there was one other, oh, one of our spreadsheets that shows them how many um, sewer connections we have, we sent in and it only had residential and they wanted all connections. So that was the other correction. We re-sent them the updated spreadsheet with all the connections for sewer. Um, lake leak resolution, we found out what we found out, now we're kind of just waiting to see. If, if the work we did shows, if it shows back up spewing as many gallons, then in the next summer season, we do something different to remedy that.
So we probably won't find out till the spring?
I'm feeling the wait right now.
Oh, are you?
But I think wintering over one and then seeing what it turns out is probably gonna be our best bet. Um, the PRI, PRV removal, so part of that Louisiana north south connection. I'm sending a letter this week to the property owner on both sides of the logs, because we played phone tag. I've sent him numerous detailed emails of the logging that needs to happen. Where the trees are his, because they own both sides of Louisiana where I'm taking out the trees. He, I will send him like really detailed emails that lay it all out and he'll say, call me and leave a message. So what about this logging? Like, oh buddy, so then I'll call him back and miss him. So we're gonna send a letter that says if we can't come to some agreement, we'll assume you're fine with trees being cut and decked on the adjacent properties. Because I don't want to get into the same hiccup we got in with Ebergs.
Yeah.
If we're playing a game, our only requirement is that we leave the asset on the, on their property. We don't have to truck it away. I mean, we could, we could truck it away if he'd get back to me and say, send it to a mill and cut me a check, but yeah. That's, and part of that Louisiana, the PRV removal needs to happen before, but like I stated, before we do surfacing. But like I stated before, with the cost of things, we're looking at more solidifying that they're removed, that the roads within it's right of way and that the base and gravel layers are meet. And then we see what money we have left, whether we paid or not, but that PRV thing will happen anyway. And then another tricky thing is, is that in order to, so I think it's June of 2024 is the end of that money. We would like till September of 2024, just to make sure anything, everything goes as planned. Um, because we'll potentially be logging this winter and then doing the road construction stuff in the spring. In order to get the extension, they've made this process you have to follow. Um, I've done the first two steps. One of them is you have to send a letter to your state senator that gave you the money and get their blessing on the extension. Well, we have a new state senator, so she knows nothing about the project. So we've sent her a letter, you know, detailing out the project and that her predecessor gave us the funding. We're looking for an extension. Any questions, please let us know, but that's our first thing. You have to get blessed by your state representative that the money came out of their office and then do a couple other things. And then you're secured the extension. It's only 90 days, so if we had to turn and burn and bust it, it just gives us a little bit of better chance to not get hemmed in with one contractor that has availability and like make our opening for the road building part a little bit bigger, keeps the cost down too, because then you're not like someone's like, oh, we're gonna charge you a pretty penny. You know, for getting it done in your short timeline, so. Um, so Millhouse Sewer Line, we have moved on to having a contractor do it. Robert just doesn't have the time. We kept expecting that Robert Watts would be able to do it. So we networked with Five Star Plumbing, because it's really a whole bunch of plumbing and then Five Star also has an excavation unit. So they're looking at the project and doing the seven connections and just coming in and once and done it. Because really we need someone under the houses doing plumbing and we want a certified plumber, which before was gonna be a plumber and Robert Watts. Now it's all under the same company, so I think it'll be a little more streamlined and working together. Um, CDBG, the design's done, as you know, we've closed that part and we're in the application part for the funding for this sewer springboard. Um. So Louisiana Water Main upgrade, that one, I still have to pick Jeff's brain about, because I need to know where exactly that is. We've been having the contractors replace. I think there's just two section, two sticks of it above Andy's developments towards Mollinger and then a few sticks of it south before it turns off, so. But I'll get a little bit more detail on that one, because I know that's a upcoming, all tied into that Louisiana connection. Um, UGB, so we had our kind of final hearing, that ordinance should be coming to you guys, updated ordinance. We'll have to hold a, I think it's a, is it a public hearing? I don't know, Stephanie knows.
I thought we were all done with them.
Well, I think there, there's, there's one more thing. And I don't know if it was that she was talking about publishing it for the ordinance 10 days ahead. I think she did, that might have been what I'm remembering.
Okay, but it's coming soon.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She had to post it 10 days ahead, I think.
Yeah, there's an ordinance coming on 10/16, she said.
Okay.
To amend the UGB.
Good. Um. SCA, we still haven't heard anything if we're being funded. We did, kind of related to that, we did, I did get a follow up email from Mr. Brewer. He's, you know, are you paving? And I'm like, John, we don't even know if we got funded. Um, so I put in another work order for them to go fix a few more bottles. Um, and then we talked about once the, when we get funded through SCA and we have the chip sealing company looking at our streets budget and potentially just adding that one block onto the bid for.
The tree street?
The tree street and just get it done, because it's, you know, he's complained about it enough. We're gonna have someone mobilized out here. It's probably not gonna be very much money out of streets budget. I'm sure we'll be able to cover it. And then we kind of have Nahalem aging all at the same rate, so to speak, because the paving happened a while back.
So refresh my memory on that future plan. Then we have H and I off state. And then the tree streets, chip seal.
Chip seal, yeah, it takes care of all the poor and marginal is what we went with, with the SCA, because we thought.
When do you normally hear back from the?
I want to say, I want to say it's like around Thanksgiving, but I'd have to look it up on an email where I'd have to look up. Yeah, could be, because usually I think it's a winter time notice and then you try to get them in spring or summer of the next year for the paving. Um, where else, where are we?
13th.
Aye.
The master plan, so that's kind of an in-house paying attention. That's where it's currently at. I know it just shows that it is admin and staff, so Ben's still collecting, you know, data on the differences and it will also, as we update the maintenance of different manholes in this project in December, that'll help us kind of formulate what's still left out there to address. Basically, it was again, a picture of all the INI problems in the community.
Yeah.
And put it together in like in-house plan, not a formal study, just a tickler list that we can keep track. And Ben's done that pretty good. Every manhole has an identifying factor and then he also built a layer where we can add in pictures. We can add in documentation, updates of maintenance. So we have that built, we're just, as time goes, we're updating it. But eventually it'd be nice to present it to council and here's the status of them at this point in time. And then like annually, see the work that's been done on all of them. Um, the lake bathroom, the rain is not helping the roof fix project. Mitch is like, what the heck? Fall just went straight into wet winter. I saw his post on one of your Facebook things, you had the rain coming in and he put gross.
I feel.
From, and so that's kind of holding him up, but it's just the facade. He needs to slide those panels on a dry spell, cut it off, replace the edge and put it back. So that's still to do. ARPA funding determination, you guys are gonna hear about that in November, what's remains in the account and what we're gonna be asking for, for the manhole rehabilitation project. And then kind of we'll need to figure out what remains in that. And if any of these other items is where council thinks the money should go, because December of 2024, all that money has to be expensed that we had from ARPA. Yeah, so we'll see. I, we might make a pretty good dent in what's left with the sewer project. Um, Free Hill Stormwater Connectivity Master Plan, that's still kind of, I talked to Robert about that a little bit. He's still, because he's been so busy with CDBG, it's still in the preliminary kind of status there. Cracked ceiling everywhere. Well, as you all know, we lost our main crack sealer director. So we're hoping that we can do some training and maybe the new gentleman and Chris or Jonathan and the new gentleman, that the new employee will take it on and pick it up. One of the things we talked about is if we get a warm enough, you know, period in the spring, because winter's probably not gonna be your time to do it, they could bust out the 80 hours in the fiscal year all the way up to June 30 and then just turn and burn and do the other 80 hours next part of summer after the new fiscal year hits, because it's really per fiscal year, is where that's out there. Uh, sign off on the top lot. The school, so I don't know if he ever came to Parks. Did Richard Stein ever come to Parks with his hopper path? Charisse?
No.
The weirdly painted, kid like painted ones I showed you?
Not unless he came to the one I wasn't here for.
Okay, so we're thinking his wood element doesn't really fit the theme of our parks.
Yeah.
It would fit really well, as it's the last element at the top lot, because it's right next to the school. It's childlike color, so we're hoping he'll install that there and then I can just get the letter and pictures.
Yeah, I don't, I never heard anything about it. I don't think he can.
Okay, he might have not.
That's great.
Um, because that I think is just gonna be a better, I don't want him to be upset that we don't feel like it fits in the parks and that would be a good fit, so hopefully he'll like it. Um, SDC increase study. Um, so that, the Water Master Plan, I think we, I don't, I'd have to look. I don't know if we got the final sign off, sign off from Oregon Health Authority. Let me just pull up something real quick. But this is happening once we do have that. Let me spell. So I'm not seeing that we've gotten final sign off on that. So, once we do though, then they'll start on the, that study. Because we were only having them do one plan at a time. We didn't want to work on all of them. And we need the water, future water use needs to populate the SDC.
And that slower Columbia engineering doing that?
To do the study for what we need to raise our SDCs for, but we were missing the Water Master Plan of looking forward in the future for water need to kind of drive that number. Because it's really like future capacity is what SDCs are. So the projects within the Water Master Plan then inform what we're gonna charge each new house to pay into the system for water.
So is Andrew working on that for us or Robert?
Um, so Robert will do the base stuff, Andrew will probably do the final stuff. So Robert's kind of, yeah. Um, the lake docks, so I told you guys at the last meeting, we've been recommended for funding. We find out once they bless the list of recommended for funding on the 15th of December. Um, then I can move forward with getting the three bids. I have two bids, they'll just be refreshed and then I have one more out of Washington to get a bid from. Because those are the only ones that build docks on a large capacity. Uh, Lake Campground Project, so Councilor Ash and Spencer, Spence Noel from
Kroll.
Kroll from the Parks Committee helped me with that application, so we'll be listing that this week. Kind of going out for that, to look for someone to design that wagon wheel first phase of the campground.
Is it with, it's just with Robin?
Yeah, to double check all the parts. And so I'm hoping I'll put it out by Wednesday is my goal. Get it at least out there and sent to a couple of firms we know do that, because you can just kind of, please bid this, bid this.
Yeah.
Gives us more of a chance.
Well, we were hoping to check with Aaron Rains, but I just haven't been able to reach him in any capacity. And um, the.
For firms to send it to?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, who's built and designed.
Done stuff like that. Um, because I finally for the field trip, had to just drive out there. I had been trying for weeks, I'd love voicemails and emails and everything for him and the, because there's the park director and then the park specialist, I don't know. Um, so I finally just drove out there and went up to the Cabin Village and found the volunteer with the radio and was like, get me a human who is paid here. And she got a ranger to come out and he ended up being the education ranger, so he came out and did the trip. But he's not like.
Yeah, the decision.
Aaron, yeah, so I was like, and he said there's like some administrative transitions happening there. But I don't think it's Aaron, but I don't know if he's just like covering everything or what's going on. But he's been unresponsive, so hopefully we get someone.
Yeah.
Otherwise.
Right.
Yeah.
Um, Sidewalk Master Plan, that was still a committee. Um, Bear Creek Culvert Adams, that is part of the um, plan to do a span bridge in a box culvert and then re-bed the stream bed as part of Springboard Sewer Project. Um, Old Dump Site Closure, that's the sampling they're gonna do this month at Mary Ann Odom's to let us know if it's non-producing, if it's, there's any leaching. And then if there is leaching, then that triggers her being able to have the orphan site funding. If there isn't leaching, then potentially we'll have to look for other ways to get her on a working well, because they will not close our permit with the adjacent property person on a non-working well. And she's got no issues, because she's hooked up to her dad's old well and that house is still connected and there's an agreement there, so she has no need for us to drill any wells. So there's no motivator, other than we're hoping maybe it'll show some signs that we need to fit the orphan site funding.
Will it also clean it up and make us not as responsible for the old site?
Yeah, yeah.
It's more on us than it is.
Right, right, yeah. Um, so the food bank, CARES Act, CDBG, we are three quarters of the way spent. I think we have 27,000 left to spend out of the 125,000. Um, and Angie and I are finalizing that list. Um, and then once that's all done, we'll be closed out of it.
The fridges and the freezers are full.
Mm-hmm.
That's full.
Yeah.
Good.
It's nice to have finally, she's like, I, all my pallet racks have just, to the edge of everything is stocked full.
Maybe we can include the turkeys with that extra.
Yeah, we talked about that. The other thing we talked about was doing some, so there's like six grand left in the personal care. We did give every household a large thing of laundry detergent, toothpaste, toothbrushes, deodorant for every member in the household. And then, um, one of the things we're looking at doing is going and getting the, a pallet of the toilet paper from Costco, because it's six rolls, like, what is it, four times? You get four six packs and giving every household the large thing of the six packs. Uh, so yeah, it's, it's really been.
Better time with the inflation the way it is.
Yeah, and there's gonna, I fear with that, there's gonna be a lot more people that didn't normally.
Yeah.
That are gonna be forced to using the food bank for that, to bridge the gap, when the, when there's too much month at the end of the money.
That's really good for our community.
Yeah, awesome, it's awesome. Uh, City Equipment Maintenance Plan, so I'm, I've gotten ahold of the Brightley people. We're still preparing and entering stuff in. They're sending it up the chain and I'm like, where's the guy that made the deal? Like, find that guy. So hopefully that's gonna get dealt with and then we'll just start running.
Going, maybe, I can't remember, but did we purchase a new snow pop?
Yes.
Okay.
Last year, the front.
And?
And they used it last year.
Oh, that's.
Yeah, yeah, so they've, they've got that. Uh, Weed Avenue Water Service, so this is the one that's out towards, it's Batons.
Yeah.
And so that's just on the, on the list for Jeffrey and his guys to get that dealt with. Water master plan, project implementation, oh, that's the, that's the OHA, still waiting. Wage analysis, step charts and drug testing. So the drug testing's really kind of off the table. Our insurance has said unless there's an accident or unless you implement a policy and start it on a certain thing, telling everyone with, you know, this will be the timing, without a drug testing policy, other than accidents, you can't just randomly drug test people. So, but the wage analysis and step charts were, have been hounded at it. But I don't know how interested you guys are in moving forward with that. We had talked about, there was kind of some hiccups, because our staff aren't just boilerplate job descriptions. We're kind of melding into multiples. So I don't know how realistic a wage study would be with the different hats that people are wearing. But if that is still of an interest on council, we can move forward. I don't know what you guys feel about it.
Well, we only feel 29 out of 34 about it.
I know. No, I know.
I'm trying to remember.
I know someone who feels strongly about it, but he's not here.
Yeah.
I'm not going to mention the name, but, but, well, I guess.
On budget?
Yeah.
Yeah. Sammy.
Sam.
Yeah, we, we all know, he, he's adamant. His employer, however, has very specific job descriptions that allow for like a step.
And a much broader talent pool?
Right.
Things like that. I think here it's important for us to incentivize and value longevity.
Yeah. Because we're
It's hard, it's, it doesn't feel like apples to apples.
Right. Because your Portland metro, you know, Hillsborough, where he works.
Right.
You can draw Loa, Beaverton, North Plains, you could, there's a lot of candidates.
Yeah, someone to capture.
Vernon.
And Vernon, yeah, well, obviously. But yeah, so I don't know about that.
How much you making now?
Yeah, so I just put timing unknown. We'll just leave it there and if, if something warrants it, then you guys will let me know. Same with Anderson RV site increase. So perhaps that's a future grant, but that's not, there's no movement on that until something kind of triggers it. The boat ramp. So that's the one that Lower Columbia has done that kind of pour and push version. And then the Oregon Marine Board does have funding that we were looking at going for the walk-on dock, but that can be amended to do, go and say, hey, we're funded for a walk-on dock now, we need, and change our application to be a boat from Marine Board. Or partial, I don't, I'd have, I'll have to figure out exactly what they cost, like the ballpark, to see if they're funding, maybe needs to be dual, them and the new recreational funding through ODFNW. That was the other pot of money they were wanting me to potentially do an app for the walk-on dock. But since they're pushing it forward funded, then maybe those two other grants I was preparing could be for the actual boat. Dewey Pool fish ladder, that's kind of got to wait till we prove our skin in the game with springboard for them to, I mean, we, we went for design funding. It didn't get approved. So we'll go the next round for design funding again with Robert from Lower Columbia. We'll do the same application in the next round. But there was just a ton of applicants. There's a ton of money, but a ton of applicants. So, and we're like, wait a sec, this is something you guys asked for and you're going to deny us the design funding? Like, how much more can we do? We'll try again. Anderson Park Boat Ramp, that's one that we sent to Parks Committee and it's just a hard thing to figure out. Like, do we increase something at the confluence, which is where people are going now? But then the recreational people will be mad. Did we try to fix the one behind the campus? But then during high flow times, are people really, you know, without runners or some sort of, you know, one of the things we had talked about with the Marine Board guys, because they brought us the, they brought us signs about the invasive species on paddleboards and canoes and such to hang up, was some places have like a metal ramp that gets like anchored at the top and it just lays over the ground. And then they pull it out during flood season for the one behind the campus. And yeah, you will, you'll go backwards down the road, but how many people are really going backwards down the road? How many fishermen you think go, would go off of it? A hundred in a, in a steelhead season?
In a steelhead season, probably not a hundred.
Yeah, so I think, you know, maybe we, with some signage or something, you say, you know, fishermen access, maybe backwards traffic. You put something that, you know what I mean, lets people know. So those are kind of options, but it wasn't, with all the other stuff going on, it kind of, they're going out of the confluence for now and we haven't had terrible trouble with them accessing the fishing that way. So we haven't moved on any of it yet. And then the welcome sign, council was going to determine if that was going to be a city or a community project.
We delegated that to Rick.
Well, you did, but the overall build of it, are we going to?
Sign replacement community has met once.
Oh, okay.
We have not met on-site yet, but we have had a conference.
Okay.
And we're still in the planning stages of it, so.
Okay, good. All right.
We'll divulge more information as we go.
Yeah.
Question. For a committee like that, is that something that the council needs to, I don't know if authorize is quite the right word?
Well, I think they didn't, they did. When did, when, what meeting was that? They were going to spearhead one. Was it last, just last month? I thought it was a couple, a couple months ago.
I thought it was when we did this.
Oh, maybe it was.
Yeah. But, but an app, so again, do we, do we do an actual authorization of committees? No, I'm not necessarily just calling this one out. It's just one of those things that popped into my head. We used to have to authorize, you know, if you had a committee, you assigned them to do something. It became formality so that they were covered under
I don't
And stuff, I don't even
I don't know. That's not ringing a bell with me, but
The only reason I ask is if they're doing something on behalf of the city, the city has to have I would think that the city would have some sort of guidance control.
Well, I think what, I might, I might be wrong, but I think we were looking at it not being a community, like not passing it off to the community, having Counselor Norman and Mayor Hobart delve into what exists there, what it need, full replacement, you know, what planning, whatever, and then coming back to council for that.
The same thing, it'd be kind of a volunteer project to
Kind of like
Start it, just what I did with the Dewey Pool. And I brought my
Yeah.
My
Schematic.
Homework, my schematic.
Yeah.
I, I did a lot of research. I brought that all to the city council and it was approved by the city council.
Yeah.
So
You're thinking the preemptive stuff needs to be
I, is figure out a way how to, how to
I'm, I'm not criticizing or objecting to that. I'm just trying to understand or make sure that we're following process that we need to do. Because otherwise, you know, how, I'm sorry, I'm not being very eloquent here. I just want to make sure that, that, you know, what happens if some, well, somebody just wants to do something like we often have and they are acting on behalf of the city. I'm doing this for the city and they're coming up with these great ideas ostensibly representing something for the city when they're not. And, and again, I'm just, it's not as specific to this, it's more of a general question that just came to my head as it relates to when we have a committee or a group that is saying, I'm doing something for the city. How, how is that managed? Does that make sense to them? Are you understanding where my brain is going on that? I hope so.
So I could, you just want me to double check that whether or not there's a process where if two council members are working on a project, does, does there need to be any pro?
Not necessarily two counselors.
Well, we wouldn't let it happen if it weren't two counselors. Where, nowhere in the city do I just give people free rein to, like, does that make sense on city property?
Right. What, okay, then the question is, why are counselors different? Is there not a process?
Just, what do you mean? Why are we investigating whether or not, or what we should put in a welcome sign?
I will come talk to you all. This is
No, I want to hear, I don't quite understand what you're saying, Counselor Wagner. I, I, I'm confused here.
What's the fear, I guess?
Yeah.
That they, that they make a pink bubble gum pink?
Again, this is not about your questions. That is not what I'm saying. I'm, I am
That's what we're talking
So what is the fear going forward, that you're worried about setting some sort of precedent or going against the precedent? But, yeah.
Sure.
I want to know too.
Well, so just like anything that happens on city property, they will be bringing their proposal to the council, to bless it, to the, to the council. If the council blesses it, then council will direct staff to find where the money would come from. Same kind of process as Steve White men with his pavilion, or Rick with the Dewey Pool, or Rick's
Right.
But so is the concern with the deliverable or with the process of like a liability?
You, you identified it as a committee.
Oh, he was just joking. He's just saying they met and talked about the
I was
That, it was, yeah.
I am not going to apologize, I'm just trying to understand. If, if you're calling it that, I didn't understand that was a joke.
Not a formal committee of the city. They're just saying they're
I was injecting some humor into it.
Yeah. He was trying to I get it, I get both sides. It's not a formal committee. It's
No.
Mayor Hobart and Counselor Norman delving into the welcome sign and what it would take to replace it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we had the conversation about it. I just, that, that for me raised a flag.
Yeah.
That's all I'm
Okay.
Okay.
And, and I can see
Yeah.
Counselor Wagner's point, because I mean, when that got brought in, I think the rest of us was like, okay, that's great, go ahead. But really, we probably should all, yes. As counsel, we, we're giving consensus, I don't know if we need a motion and, or anything to direct it, but, but it needs to be on the record that yes, this has been blessed by the entirety of the council.
Yeah, was it not in the minutes of that works?
I, and I don't
I feel like it probably was, but I don't remember.
I can
I mean, we really talked about it and like, we're like, oh, thank you, we don't have to like have this as a
Yeah.
Staff project.
Yeah, so we can, we could, you know, so do some, if it's not in the minutes, document it. At the next council meeting, we can talk about it and you guys can say, yeah, we're all in agreement. And then it will be in those minutes.
You don't know what we're coming up with yet.
No, I mean
No, just that you guys are
You're doing
On developing something is what I think they want the blessing.
Okay.
Okay.
That's
I thought we already had that. Well, yeah.
As long as the minutes say it, as long as the minutes say it, then yeah, right? It's documented that you all agreed. If the minutes don't say it, then I think at our next council meeting, we just re-up that agreement that you, you guys are asking them to go delve into that, into it, come up with something to present. Okay. So that was the last one. Do you guys have any other questions, clarification on any of these things?
That's a lot of projects to
Well, we, we, there's about 20 that aren't here anymore, so
Yeah. We're tackling
About a year ago, we had about 55.
And hopefully
We keep
A few of these are going to drop off pretty soon.
Yeah, I hope so.
Yeah. I will give you one more update that I did give notice to our planning contractor.
Oh, yeah.
That we're exiting our agreement with them and going out for RFQ. The service, it's just been pulling teeth. And the last draw was we had some citizens, longtime citizens, coming in asking about partitioning their property. And the planners were on the Zoom, Ben and Stephanie were here as staff. And the planner basically was like, the citizen said something and the planner was like, well, no, you'll have to do this and this and this. And was really kind of putting up roadblocks at every turn, to which Stephanie said to the citizens, excuse us for one second. We're going to have a little bit of an argument here. And like went ahead with the planner on the actual city code and was like, code blah, blah, blah says here. Are you looking at code blah, blah, blah? Code blah, blah, blah says you can do this. And they both came to me and they're like, we have to give notice. This, this is like them making us fight with our own citizens for what is in the code. Like, no, we're not
This isn't Winterbrook, this was who we were using
Yeah.
Saying prior to
And they will, they still refuse because of COVID to come out on site.
I thought we were, I already thought we were like
Well, we had hoped they'd given us a new staff person. We were hoping that she would be different than the last staff person.
I'm sorry to hear that.
Yeah. But Winterbrook potentially would maybe apply. They've done a lot of work out here and there's some other planning firms that I think, I did have Ben and Stephanie, because they're the ones that mostly work with planning, go through the scope of work and amend it to really put in the scope of work what we need from a planner. We're already doing the permit review. We take in the permits, so it's really some finite things we need from someone with that expertise. We can get people prepped and tell them what the code says and all that. We need you in, in here reviewing things. We need you onsite for commission meetings, not on a Zoom, because people don't read that well when you're trying to do land use. So I did give them notice to November 15th. So I told staff, we have till November 15th to get out our RFQ and get moving. So, I think it'll serve us better. For the most part, we were just barely using them because staff does have the skill set. And then they were like, they came back from that meeting with the citizen, the couple that was the citizens, and they're like, oh no, we just had it out with them. We had excused the patrons to, to fight with them about what our code actually says. And they had no interest in updating our code. And we've been slowly wanting tweaks and corrections and things to reflect what's really happening here. And there was no interest. Where Matt, their previous employee, was all about that. He loved working with the planning commission and
Yeah.
Updating things and
Does Carol want to come out of retirement?
No, she doesn't. And Matt's happy in Millersburg, so. But Ben said, every time I get so mad at the planners, I just have to go home at night and call Matt. Oh yeah, Matt's still in connection with them.
Okay, it said, city welcome signs consensus of council is for the sign upgrades to be completed by volunteers.
Oh, okay, so then at our next meeting, then we should designate Mayor Hobart and Counselor Norman as the
As the
As the
Volunteers.
Yeah, the volunteers that are bringing back the proposal.
Okay.